Welcome. Today is Monday, October 18th. Welcome to the City Council Ways and A Joint Meeting of the Ways and Means and Zoning Subcommittee Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Do a roll call of the members of the Joint Meeting of the Ways and Means Subcommittee and Zoning Subcommittee. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Grasso.
Here.
Here. Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here. Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here. Counselor Powers, absent. Counselor Sorino?
Here.
Here. And Co-Chair Visconti?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
Before we begin, I'm going to pass it over to Counselor Keefe for a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This weekend or Friday specifically, we received some really terrible news. A close friend of ours, a close friend of mine, and a close friend of the city's, also an employee of the city, Priscilla Nickerson passed away on Thursday evening. Priscilla survived by her husband Ray, her sister Rose, and her brother-in-law John. Priscilla worked for the Festa family for many years in the city of Riviera, and more recently was working as a liaison between the 3-1-1 office. And many of us as counselors calling and checking in almost weekly to make sure that our 3-1-1 needs were being met and following up with the department heads. Priscilla has been a friend of myself, my wife. My wife was also worked with Priscilla at the Casa Ocho where her and her husband owned for a number of years, and also serviced the community. Whenever we needed, as the president of Papua Naur, whenever I needed a time for the Papua Naur organization, the Nickersons came and said, "Take the hall, just use it." We had bingo nights there, we had many banquets there, and many Papua Naur and baseball events, and never charged any of the organizations. And I know that it wasn't just for us, that was for many people in the city. So, I lost a friend, but I know that she was a friend to many of us, and I just want to ask that we have a moment of silence for Priscilla. Thank you. And, pardon me, Mr. Chairman, you know, you don't always write down exactly what you want to say, and you want to come from the right place, but Priscilla also was an organizer of the Santa Walk that we had for many years in the city. And last year with COVID, the Santa Walk was not, we didn't have it. And I know that there'll definitely be a Santa Walk this year. Actually, the family has asked that in lieu of flowers, if you could submit, if you wanted to contribute to the Santa Walk, there's information through the mayor's office on that. Also, the services will be at Bonfiglio from 4:00 to 8:00 on Wednesday, and also at St. Anthony's Church on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Beck, we are here on, I believe there is one item on the agenda this evening. It's an ordinance amending meter rates of the revised ordinance for the city of Riviera. This is obviously solely for a discussion prior to going to a public hearing. So, Madam Clerk, if you can read the changes.
The language of the ordinance is as follows. Section 1, "Section 13.04.130 meters, metered rates of the revised ordinances of the city of Riviera is hereby amended by inserting the words 'or an owner-occupied residential building comprised of not more than four units,' after the word 'units' in the first sentence of the definition for residential use." Section 2, "Section 13.04.130 meters, metered rates of the revised ordinances of the city of Riviera is hereby amended by inserting the words 'except for an owner-occupied residential building comprised of not more than four units,' after the word 'units' in the first sentence of the definition for commercial use." And Section 3, "Section 13.04.132 multi-unit facility billing of the revised ordinances of the city of Riviera is hereby amended by inserting the words 'except for an owner-occupied residential building comprised of not more than four units,' after the word 'units' in the first sentence."
Yes.
If I may, just to divulge that I will be recusing myself from this whole situation as far as discussing on the council floor, and I have checked with the Ethics Commission that due to the fact that the building I live in will be affected financially by the change in this ordinance, so I will be recusing myself from that and any discussion relating to the, by trust, that is tied in with the House. But I will be speaking on behalf of myself as a tenant, which the Ethics Commission allows.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If we can begin by, any discussions, any counselors?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Basically, what I would like to hear is some more conversation as to pros and cons about this, because this is, all we were given was this statement as to whether in fact, are the rates appropriate for a particular amount of units in a particular place. I do feel very strongly that there are two different items here. Number one, and this is only my personal belief, is that four units can be recognized as a family-oriented type of operation. Any more than four units would be a commercial type of enterprise, which would give a different classification altogether. That's income-producing per se, and I know of four families also, but the statute for many, many years has read with the four families is one level, and thereafter, it's another level. And this would authorize a change in that particular event, as far as I know. Again, this is a very bland situation that was given to us, and just one sentence, and that's it, taking around with it. I was hoping for more dialogue and more conversation about it. Are we going to take a vote tonight to determine this, or is this just a recommendation? I'm not sure. So, there are a lot of things that are up in the air. We have some people here, I'm sure, that want to voice their concerns about it. I don't know. I mean, those were, those are my thoughts prior to hearing no conversation about this. And they've been my belief since I've been on the council, that this is what it was. Four families can be considered like a personal situation. Anything after that is commercial, and that means drives a different rate. That's just what I understand.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as a co-chair as well, just to give you some edification, Counselor, and I agree, this does seem a little bland, but the process of an ordinance change can be a little time-consuming and also arduous for the right reasons, because we don't want to just change ordinances every day. That would be very confusing to residents. This was brought up by myself and a few others. I specifically put a motion in front of the council a few months back to ask to revisit the current water meter rates that were newly impacted to some of our residents, because it was a little shell-shocking. A lot of the rates for anyone with a multifamily of four or more went from a residential rate, well, not all of them, but people in those tweeners between four, or three, and five and six, were seeing their water rates double. I mean, the commercial rates double, more than doubled than the residential rate. So, people that have lived in these homes for a number of years, it was a little bit of sticker shock to get the water rates that had just been adjusted since, in around 2018, that was the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund changed this that we agreed upon, and we realized that that might have been something that was somewhat flawed. So, this is step one, and then it goes next, if we were able to agree that this should go forward in a positive way, then it would go to publicary next meeting, and then it would continue to be dialogued, and then it would come back into another subcommittee, and then it would be officially voted on for an ordinance change. So, we're still many steps away from this being, coming into effect. But just for my feelings, I felt that our water rates already in the city are very high. We know that. There's a lot of reasons for that. It's because of the proximity to the ocean, the age of our infrastructure, and the MWRA really, you know, we're kind of, we're beholden to them. Infiltration of the system, et cetera. So, if we're able to save some residents, people that live in the city, people that own or occupants, a few dollars, that live in the property, that aren't just landlords living in other communities and renting out their properties as an income only, if we're able to save those that aren't living in, then we're not talking about 10, eight, 15-unit buildings that, you know, quite frankly, don't shed a lot of tears for them, because I can, I mean, we just know the value of the property, it's extensive. So, I don't think that there's a lot of financial hardships there. I do feel a little bit more for the four units owner occupants, or four and below, than I do feel strongly that they should not be deemed commercial water rates, and that was why I brought this up. I know that there's some conversations about further amending it. I feel good about, I think four is where I would draw the line, but again, I'm just one voice here, and that's how I feel. Thank you.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that we all understand and realize that our water and sewer rates are going through the roof in this city, as they are in most cities that are part of the MWRA. The thing that comes to my mind is, let's say somebody has a five-unit building, and they're living in it, and they have a couple of children that are living in other apartments in the building. Where are we going with this? You're going to tax a family like that? And that's basically what we're doing. Tax a family so that, I can understand people that have properties that live outside the city, and there are many. They, five, six, 12, or more units, they should be, it's a commercial venture. There's no question about it. They should be paying a commercial rate. And the best thing we can do on this city council, in my opinion, is to work diligently to make sure that we do everything possible, everything we possibly can, to keep those rates low, not only for the people in the one, two, three-family homes, but everyone that's paying a water and sewer rate, because it's got to a point where it's almost impossible for people that are living on a retirement income to pay those rates. So, I think we have to look at this a lot more carefully right now, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I can make some comments from the chair. From a lending standpoint, and being in the lending business for almost 30 years, we consider commercial properties anything above four units. It's been that way for as long as I've known. So, I agree with the fact that keeping it consistent that water rates should be handled at a residential rate based at anything below four units and under. But I also have some questions that need to be answered, and what I'd like to know is, how many units, you know, there are questions that I'd like to know. How many four families are in the city of Riviera? How many properties is this going to affect? How much is it going to affect the city's budget in terms of the water rates? While I agree with that, I'd like to know what it's going to affect and how it's going to affect the city as well, and that's my concern. So, as we move forward towards the further discussions, I'd like some information from the assessors' office, and gathering some information from that office as much as possible so we can have as much information to make that decision before making the ordinance change. While I agree that we should make it consistent, I'd like to know the information before doing so, is my opinion. What I'd like to do as well is open it up to discussion, to any proponents.
Roger Dragani, 605 Park Ave. I own a four-family house. I've been a Riviera resident since I was five years old, except for a few years I was in the service. I live in the four-family house that I have, and my tenants all have children, I think the oldest child is seven years old. I have three boys, and one in each one of the apartments. And one's, one family, they're a Moroccan couple, and they have a small boy again, and another's a single mother, and the third one is sort of an unmarried couple. I also have five rain barrels, because I thought I would spend a lot of money to water my garden and my plants and stuff I have. So, I get a lot of water during the summer and, you know, the non-cold days of the year. I get a lot of water to, you know, do that with my five barrels, which are located around my house, because I thought my water bill was kind of high to begin with. But, just as you mentioned, Chairman, is that, you know, I took a real estate course years ago, and they always said, you know, anything over four is commercial. I went on the web today and just kind of looked around, and, you know, some people are training and stuff, and they're talking about, yeah, five to whatever above is commercial. My mortgage was a regular loan. My insurance is just regular. I'm not considered commercial, and I'm just very interested in this because it affects me personally. I'm 76 years old. This is my, this is my income. The families I have, I am not paying that much money at this point. You know, I might have to change that in the future. These people, some of these people have been with me, two of them have been with me around eight years. So, I'd have to move some of that cost to them, because this is my income. I don't have a pension or anything. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore? Name and address for the record.
Okay. I'm here with my husband, Marvin Gold, and we have the property at 70 Sumner Street, at 7076 Sumner Street.
Did you get the name?
And we've owned the house since 64. We've had the house since 64. We moved in, and we have been there, owner-occupied, for 63 years. And we were paying residential water for 63 years. And I'm going to see if I can just give you a little break now. We're not investors. That's our home. We stayed there all these years, and we're not investors, we're just homeowners. We're about the only live-in landlords on Sumner Street in a multi-house. And during COVID, we worked with our tenants. Couple of them had, their hours cut, they could only pay whatever it was. We accepted it until they were able to pay a little more. Good tenants, and we worked with them. And, okay. We're on social security, my husband and I. My rents are low. We haven't raised them. We've had some tenants there for five, six years, never raised them, because they're good tenants. And it was our home, so we're not looking to make money out of it. And we're owner-occupied, but the expenses have escalated. We heat the whole house, and now the oil, we're going to start heating, the oil has gone up, and it's going to go up. And we haven't raised them, and we're not getting as much, but we live there. And for 63 years, we never paid commercial. If they were going to do something or whatever, they should have, but we feel that... Okay. So, now, my husband and I are asking that you reverse it and give us residential water. And we're live-in landlords, we owner-occupy, we're not going anywhere, we'll probably be there until the end. So, I mean, I can't see, it's costing me a lot. Now, I paid the water today, I paid, we've been paying commercial for three months now, and it's going to be a lot. And I have very little tenants in the house. I think we've got, what, eight people? In the whole six family. We don't have two families, we watch carefully, they wash the cars, but we heat the whole house. So, I'm asking, after 63 years of paying residential, I feel it's unfair for us to pay commercial. I really do. Even though it's considered a six family, it's owner-occupied, and we live here. So, I'd like some consideration. We both would. Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
Leonard Maravito, 609 Beach Street. Good evening to you all. Former owner of Vato in Studio, some of you people know me, bumper stickers and signs, Arthur, of course, for years, right? For years. I'm actually here as an owner of a six-family house that I've had in my family for quite a while, too. And the stuff that she stated is exactly what I would say, I'm not going to repeat that. Some of the stuff I wanted to say to you guys, though, tonight, as I did my notes. I was coming here as a selfish owner of a six-family, family-orienteded building. That's why I came here. I spoke with my sister Elaine, and I changed my stance a little bit, and the way I see things, to be able to charge somebody extra for water usage, to me at least anyway, is illegal and discriminatory. You're signaling me out because I own a six-family home. You want to charge me a higher rate. Why? Because I own multiple units. Let's say my neighbor, who owns a three-family, right? He uses more water than I do. His rate is going to be half minus, my rate is going to be double. I have spoken to three abutters in my area, one three-family, one two-family with a basement apartment, and a two-family. They all use more water than I do. Now, when we look at this problem as it comes up, I know that, speaking with my counselor, that there's not a lot of people that fall into this category, owner-occupied, six-family, five-units. I think that some of this stuff needs to be grandfathered in. I think that the people that, you know, have been the backbone of the city for years, I've been here, I'm here in front of you at 64 years old, I've been here my entire life. My building consists of a 90-year-old mom, a Vietnam Vet brother-in-law who was sister to my wife, who passed away of ovarian cancer, sure, some of you know that. I have my daughter and her disabled boyfriend, and I also have a disabled cancer patient. There is eight people living in my building beside me. So, I don't think we can look at this and say, "The size of." What we need to do is need to find a way to find out who is using more. It doesn't matter, three-family, four-family, five-family, six-family, we need to know who's using more water. That's why you're getting a surcharge from the MWRA, because their usage, you know, there was a place behind me, they had their hose on all year in the back of the yard. I know that that's not metered, you know, it's metered, but it's not going into the sewer, but it's ridiculous. The waste of water, why am I being punished? Okay? Why am I being punished? Because I have more. I shouldn't be punished because I have more. You want to raise my taxes because I have more? You want to do an assessment of my property because I have more? That's a different... That's a different story. Of course I'm going to pay. But when something's metered, we don't pay more for gasoline because we have a bigger car. We don't pay more for oil because we use more oil. We don't pay more for gas because we use more gas in our building. It's metered. We should all pay the same. It's simple math. I wasn't good in algebra, but I was good in simple math. And I think that's where this problem needs to be addressed. This is only going to affect a very few people in this city, just a few. And I think that's where you need to draw the line. Your grandfather in some people, and make sure that it, it works out that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor. Name and address for the record.
Hi, Eileen Hurley, 21 River Ave, Revere. I just want to say, I'm a big conservationist. I believe in using less of our resources. If you, you want people to use less water, you need to charge them more if they're using more water. And that's the way it'll work. You hit people in their pocket. But to pick out people, I don't think it's fair. It's not fair at all. If I own a, a five family, and I'm using 50,000 more gallons than the guy over there that he has a one family, or he's using 50,000, I'm using, where is it fair? That, that guy is going to pay more because he has a five family. We need to make people conserve. It's the same thing with recycling. We've been having a hard time with recycling, getting people to recycle. You hit them in their pocket. And I hate to say that, but that's what you do. So it's just not fair to these people. Like my brother, I, I lived there since fourth grade. My mother still has the house, my brother has the house. They've been there a long time. And they live there, and all the family lives there. My mother, my grandmother live there, my aunts. It's a family house. And it just, it's not fair to charge them that kind of money if they're conserving, and they are conservatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor? Name and address for the record.
I'm not a counselor now. I'm a resident. Yes, I am. Thank you. Arin Ovaselsky, 53 D. Holmes Street, apartment number one. As I mentioned before, I'm accusing myself as being a city councilor tonight, but I do thank Counselor Keith for bringing this up. You know, having been contacted by other people for various reasons. In my house, where I, I live, the trustee that owns the house has already stated that due to the water increase, they would have to increase our rents. In my house and the other apartments, there are two senior citizens, and a family of four of young people. And I'm the third senior citizen that lives in the house. So, you know, we've already been told that because of this, our rent would have to be increased. And as an overall thing, I think the grandfather clause may be an issue. If you can use a date specified as of July 1st, July 1st, 2018, when the ordinance was changed, to make it anybody prior to that that's owner occupied in a four or a six unit, on behalf of my friends behind me, grandfather them in for the residential rate. Something to think about. And hopefully that, on behalf of my friends again, maybe we can also predate this effective July 1st of this year, and whatever commercial, financial rates that they've put into it, they be credited, not that the city give money back to it, but they credit it towards the future residentials, of their residential rate. Something to think about. But, you know, I know I don't want my rent to go up more. I have a disabled wife, and it, it becomes difficult having to deal with medical bills and nurses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I think we ought to think about this, you ought to think about this, and try and accommodate as many people as possible. For some reason, I thought, somebody told me that there may be like 100 units in the city, that there may be that. I'm not sure. Now, that's four family, that, and they're not sure if there are owner occupied people, if there's, if the assessors would show that. I don't know. But something to think about, you know, I look forward to saving my rent and saving their homes. So that's it, and thank you for your time and efforts on this. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm really disturbed with this. You know, we have an ordinance for Airbnbs that Airbnbs can't run unless they're owner occupied. It's, it, every single day, we, we pay high prices with everything. Food's going up, gas is going up, rent is going up. I don't know how people can live. And I feel like we're pushing people that have lived here all their lives out of the city. I just, I did a mailing in May to ask permission to get trees in front of residential houses, and I got the stickers from the, from City Hall. And you wouldn't believe how many people in this city don't own property. They're from Andover, they're from Marblehead, they're from Winthrop, they're from every, every place. But, so I feel if you've lived here all your life and you live in the same house, and you own the house, and you have tenants in your house, whether it's four, five, six, seven, I don't care. If you're owner occupied, you should be considered paying residential, not commercial. And the people that have houses in Beauchamp, in Pointe de Pines, that live in Andover, that live in wherever, they should be fined, they should be paying commercial because that's, they're getting the rent from that. And I'm really disturbed about this whole thing, so I just wanted to say my piece. Thank you.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as stated, I'm certainly in favor of this. And again, if there's, if there's need to further amend it, I would, I would be amenable. I don't want to overtax the residents of our city, especially the ones that have been here for a very long time, that are doing the right thing with their properties, that are taking care of those around and not price gouging. Because unfortunately, they do have to pass it off if they're getting extra, extra cost. What I would just ask is, because I, I do want to see us act on this, I feel very strongly about that, is, through you to the clerk, is if we made, I, I want to hear from Rich Fiske, I want to hear from the city water and sewer department. I know Rich really kind of oversees that. Is where, you know, where does the numbers, how does this stack up? Like we said, how many houses are there? How many does this really impact? Could we, could we add a stipulation that it's, it runs through the sale of the land? So the wonderful people in front of us right now, you know, we grandfathered them in, but that would only be good up until they sold their property. And even if the next owner was not an owner occupant, was an owner occupant, but that's, that's kind of where the grandfather clause would come. But how we can go about that is, would we still be able to move along tonight? Because I don't want to, I don't want to delay this. If we continue to delay it and delay it, we'll be talking about this in 2022. So through you to the clerk, is are we able to act on this, this evening so it goes to public hearing next week? We can ask that? We get someone from that department to speak to us to give us a little bit more insight? Or do we have to?
No, this will be able to go to public hearing.
Okay, great.
The joint committee would need to report, whatever language out that you want to be sent to public hearing. The city council then votes on that to send it to public hearing.
But if it wasn't fully amended, yes.
The point being that this is a year ending, assigned time, so we have to act upon this before December 31st. So in any event, we have to make a decision prior to that.
Correct. But, but what I was saying is, do we have to fully amend it tonight?
No, it does not. The city council can certainly amend ordinances after the public hearing has taken place. The city council would need to just vote on those amendments prior to voting on the ordinance as amended.
So if we were to move along tonight without changing anything, and then further reviewing it on the next meeting, et cetera, et cetera, that would be okay? Great, thank you.
If my colleagues don't object, we can vote this out as a favorable motion to be heard at the next meeting.
That's going to be on, to, so the committee, if they want to report it out, you do that, the joint committee, you guys can report that out for, that on Monday?
On Monday.
Yep.
So we'll vote that out. We'll do all favor, all opposed? Aye? So ordered. No further business? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.